Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 11th, 2018 Board of Selection. We'll call this meeting to order. Mine is one select board member, but I'm sure he'll be along. Consent agenda for tonight. We have the warrants, AP 1850, AP 18505, PR 1851, AP 18515?
51-2.
Okay. PR 1852S, AP 18F2, AP 1901, AP 1851-2. We have established a element of an ambulance oversight committee. Appointments to ambulance oversight committee. I'm not sure if we're -- do we want to -- we're going to be okay with that?
We can always appoint these.
We may have to readjust that.
Yes.
Appointments of special counsel, appointment of special employee retroactive to June 6th for Thomas Reedy. That would be the lawyer for the senior center. Appointment to the fire substation building committee, Eric Beal. Appointment part-time dispatch, Brianna Ushko. Hadley Media appointment, Glenn Clark. Resignation alternate funding inspector, Richard Whitkis. Use of the town common. Most had fully redeemer on the stick for overflow parking. And end of the year transfers, which we have not did together.
Yeah, it's in your documents.
Okay.
But there are three of them.
Three of them?
One for $3,300 for the select board for professional development and additional services for interpreters during the extra town meeting. We have town insurances, which was a negative $20,64. That's because we've been upgrading our properties because we have increased wastewater and leakings and so that increased our budget values. And then finally, the financial audit for us, 17, short $1,500. And all of these can be transferred, covered by transfers to close out the fiscal year 2018.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, Mr. Beal.
Second, any further discussion?
Did you need info? Mike asked me to present Brianna Ushko, or are you all set?
If you would like to, that would be trying. Yes, please.
So Brianna was interviewed for the per diem dispatcher position, and we just put a quick thing together for you on her bio. So Brianna is a -- Ushko was a resident at Hadley and graduated from Hopkins Academy in 2009. She was also a member of the Hadley Fire Department on the call force. She started her senior year of high school, 11 of '09. She's currently employed by the City of Northampton as a full-time emergency dispatcher and has all of the necessary certifications to begin training immediately. She currently works the midnight shift and has been employed by the City of Northampton since 2014. And I think she's going to be a home run, of course.
Thank you. Eric Beal, did you know about him coming on the fire substation committee?
No.
I didn't either. We had talked about it. Was there opening some?
I think there's still one additional.
One additional opening?
But that's great. Love to have Mr. Beal.
You don't agree?
Hadley Media appointment of Glenn Clark for the open position there, too. And resignation of alternate funding inspector, Richard Whitkis. I missed those two things there, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll go right to the -- if you don't mind, David, we'll go right to the audit presentation. We'll get you in and out.
So my name is Jamie Campbell. I'm from Raleigh, Tennessee, and I'm the partner in charge of the town's audit. I'm here tonight to present the results of the town's fiscal year 2017 audit. So primarily, financial statements and management letter. I'd like to start by just giving a brief overview of what an audit does and does not do. As an auditor, we often find there can be this misconception when people hear the term audit, they think that we come in and we pour through every single transaction that passed through the town during the fiscal year. And that is not the case. An audit is not designed to review 100% of the transactions that come in and out of the town on a daily basis, nor to provide assurance that every single transaction is processed in accordance with town policies and procedures, or even state and federal laws and regulations. Instead, audits are conducted under a set of standards known as government auditing standards. And those standards require that we plan and perform our audit using a concept known as materiality. Now, materiality will vary based on the size of the entity. So for instance, materiality for a large city will be different from that of a small town. In fiscal year 2017, the materiality for the town's general fund, the main operating fund, was about $125,000. That doesn't mean we don't look at anything below that amount, because we certainly do. It just means that auditing standards say we should focus our testing on transactions and balances at or above that level. Now, during our audit, we spend a good deal of our time in the more significant, higher-risk departments, such as the treasurer's office, the collector's office, the assessor's office, and the accounting department. We perform a couple of different types of testing during our audit. We perform evaluations of the town's major processes, so like your cash receipt process, your cash disbursement process, and your payroll process, just to name a few. And then we design procedures to test those controls and make sure they're operating effectively during the period under audit. We also perform what's known as substantive testing to make sure that the balances that are reported in the town's general ledger and ultimately in the financial statements are accurately or adequately supported. So for instance, we'll test to make sure that your cash balance in the general ledger is supported by reconciled bank statements from the treasurer's office, or that your receivable balances are supported by a detailed balance due listing from the collector's office. We also perform a bunch of various analytical and review procedures, like during the audit. Now, I know that was like a very brief overview of what we do. Does anyone have any questions about that? Or, you know, feel free to stop me at any point in time if you do have, you know, questions about what I'm talking about. I don't know if you guys have copies of -- no, okay. Perfect. We just don't have the actual paper. I'm going to start by looking at the financial statements, which is the bigger of the two Now, the town's financial statements are presented under rules established by the Government Accounting Standards Board, or GATSB. And there are essentially five parts to the financial statements, or sections to financial statements. There is the audit opinion, management's discussion and analysis, two sets of financial statements, and then the footnotes. The audit opinion is the only part of the financial statements that actually belongs to us. And in fiscal year 2017, we issued the town an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the best opinion we can issue to anyone. And that means basically that based on the results of our audit testing, we felt that the town was in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, or what's known as GAAP. After the audit opinion comes management's discussion and analysis, which is like an executive summary to the financial statements. It provides a brief overview of what's included in the financial statements, as well as some of the key numbers and results of operations for the past fiscal year. So if you want the abbreviated version, that's a good place to kind of start and look at things. After that come your two sets of financial statements themselves. You have your government-wide statements and your fund basis statements. And we're going to start by looking at the -- one of the government-wide statements, which is on page 11. Now, page 11 is a statement in deposition, which is similar to a balance sheet. This statement is one of your government-wide statements, and it is essentially GATSB's way of taking a governmental operations and showing it like a business. So you report the town's funds in two columns. You have your governmental activities column, which represents the town's general fund, your stabilization fund, your special revenue or grant fund, your capital project funds. Those are in that column. And then your business-type activities column is the town's enterprise funds. So that's the separation between the two there. And in order to create these statements, we essentially take your fund basis financial statements and add things such as your capital assets, your bonds payable, and your other long-term liabilities, like your net pension liability and your net OPEB obligation. So while these statements do do a good job in terms of showing like the true assets and liabilities of the town, they're not as meaningful to the end users of the financial statements. The governing body, for instance, or even financial advisors and bond rating agencies don't spend a lot of time with these statements, because these are not what you're using on a daily basis to make your decisions. It's not how you set your budget. You know, there are certain numbers on here that are important, and, you know, they do look at those, but otherwise, you're not using these on a daily basis to make decisions. I do want to talk about a couple of numbers on the page, though. About three-quarters of the way down the page, under the non-current liabilities, you'll see your net OPEB obligation. At the end of fiscal year 2017, that liability was about $5.2 million. If you recall, when the standard was issued that required cities and towns to book this liability, they allowed the -- the GATSB allowed you to calculate the total liability, amortize it over a 30-year period, and basically book a little bit of that liability every year. So as of 2017, you have about seven years of that liability booked. They have since changed their mind and issued two new standards that replaced the previous standard they'd issued. And in fiscal year 2017, because the town has an OPEB trust fund, you were required to implement GATSB standard number 74. Now, that standard did not change any of the numbers actually reported in your financial statements. What it did was add some additional footnote information and some schedules at the back of the financial statements that include information about your OPEB trust fund and what the total liability will be. Next year, the town will be required to implement statement number 75, which is going to require you to book the entire liability, which in your case, you know, increases the liability from 5.2 million to like 6.9 million, somewhere around there, based on the most recent information we have from the actuary. So it doesn't actually increase it as much as we've seen in like other cities and towns. And I think a lot of that, the reason for that, is the town has quite a good amount of money into the OPEB trust fund and has a clear, you know, kind of funding schedule for that. At the end of 2017, there was about $840,000 in your trust fund, in the OPEB trust fund, which puts you at about, just under 11% funded, which isn't huge, but compared to a lot of other cities and towns we've seen, that's on the higher side in terms of percent funded. So I think that plays a big role in terms of like your liability not increasing by a substantial amount from this year to next year. A lot of people are seeing, you know, 10-plus million dollar jumps in their liability. So that is good news there, I guess, if you want to look at it that way, in terms of what your, what your balance sheet will look like next year. Do you have any questions on, on the OPEB liability? I guess I probably should have explained before I started that, but the OPEB liability is your unfunded retiree health insurance costs.
Oh, we know what it is.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm sure I'm aware of that. We've heard this before, right?
Four or five years. I'm sorry to cut in like that, but it's...
No, no, I know, I know.
Don't feel sorry you didn't explain it to us.
I know. I'm glad I didn't have to explain that to you, let me just put it that way. Great.
My only question, though, would be, you said it's 6.9 million in 2017? Would be what we need to have in there?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. So your --
Yeah.
No, it's okay. Your liability at the end of 17 is about $5.2 million.
Yeah.
Next year, when we are required to record the full liability, it's going to increase to about $6.9 million.
So will we have to put more than we're currently contributing to meet the standard? Or are we good with what we're putting in?
No, you're good. I mean, there's no requirement to fund the liability at this time, that, you know, down the road, I wouldn't be surprised if something comes out that requires you to fund it, but you're putting in kind of whatever you can, or whatever the town decides to put in. The actuary is determining what your total liability is based on your employees, mortality rates, you know, health insurance cost rates, like all these crazy things that I don't want to know what actuaries do, but so they calculate what the liability is. And how much you put into the trust every year changes or like reduces that life, that future liability. So it doesn't mean you have to contribute anymore, per se. You know, you're, you might reevaluate it just because there are new standards and they do have to calculate the liability slightly differently, and they have to use different percentages and stuff like that, but it doesn't mean that you guys have to change what you're doing now.
That's a whole separate report we'll get from Parker and Almore.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we talk about that.
Nice.
Yeah. That's as bad as good a read as a financial statement.
So town's over done nothing.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, no, there's...
And I know we already put in more than we would like to right now, but, you know, I'm just wondering if I could...
I was trying to keep up.
No.
Trying to keep up with it, but it's a big...
It is a big number. Yeah, it is. Another big number on this page is the line right above that, is your net pension liability, which the town was required to book for the first time a couple of years ago. That number represents the town's share of the Hampshire County Retirement System's unfunded liability. The town itself is about 4.7% of the total system, so you're booking essentially 4.7% of the unfunded liability of the system itself. So that's what that, that's what that number represents. And every couple of years, they have a new, they get their own actuary evaluation, they get adjusted based on, you know, how well they did compared to what they thought they would do in investments and things along that line. And I'm sure your funding schedule gets adjusted kind of accordingly for those, for those changes. So that's all I was going to talk about on this page, unless anyone had any other specific questions.
Is the retirement 100%? Or is that going up in the pieces like OPEB was?
No, that's the entire, the entire liability, which is kind of why I think they changed their mind on the OPEB. They, you know, issued the standard for net pension and were like, well, this is kind of similar to OPEB, so maybe we should just book the full amount. So I think they were trying to be nice and didn't want everyone to like book this huge liability all at once, and then they clearly got over that. So now everyone will have a much larger liability. That's a good question, though. I get that a lot. Okay. The next page I want to look at was page 13. Now, 13 is one of your fund basis financial statements, which is a little more in line to what your use of looking at when you get a report from the town accountant, with the exception of a few things. Your, up to the far right, you have your non-major governmental funds. That column there consolidates your special revenue and your grant funds. Some of your trust funds are grouped in that, in that column. The capital project fund and your community preservation fund, they qualify as what are known as major funds, which is why they're presented separately in here. And you can see those as separate columns in the financial statements. Now, your water fund, although it is an enterprise fund in terms of how the town treats it and operates, it doesn't qualify as an enterprise fund for financial reporting purposes, because the definition of enterprise fund means that it has to cover all of its, all of its expenses, and it doesn't pay all of the debt that's associated with that fund. So it's reported as a non-major or governmental fund in your financial statements. Has no effect or bearing on how the town budgets or does anything like that, it's just how it's presented under the rule, the accounting rules. So that's why you see that fund here and not with your sewer or your cable enterprise funds on the statements kind of later on. Your, the first column there, the general column, is that your general fund, but it also includes your stabilization fund balance. I'm sure you guys have heard this section before, but it, a few years ago, GATSB issued another one of their famous standards, which required the stabilization fund to be combined with the general fund for financial statement presentation purposes in order to align how all governmental entities were reporting their stabilization slash rainy day funds. On the state level, the rainy day fund is part of their general fund, so they felt that on the city and town level, in order to make them look similar to state governments, they should be grouped with the general fund. So the, the balance in your unassigned fund balance, down towards the bottom of your page there, the $3 million, 2.1 of that is, 2.1 million of that is your stabilization fund, which represents about 13% of the town's annual budget, which is a very healthy stabilization fund balance. On, again, on the higher side in terms of what I'm seeing, in terms of percentage of your annual budget, they have set aside in that balance, so that's, that is a good indicator. The rest of that, about $900,000, that's your general fund unassigned or unreserved fund balance, which is essentially like your starting point for your free cash calculation. So it's money that you have not reserved for other purposes in your general fund. Again, that's about 6% of the town's annual budget, which is healthy. It's, as always, it could be higher, but it is still a very healthy number, considering you have so much money, you know, set aside in your stabilization and your OPEB trust fund. So that is good as well. That was all I was going to touch on in the financial statements, unless anyone, you know, read through and had questions on any of the, any of the numbers or...
Just a question. Of the management discussion and analysis? So is that something we write and provide to you?
It's not. Most cities and towns, we just prepare it for them. It's a required section, and there's certain things that are required to be presented in it. There is an option to add kind of at the end footnote E or something like that, that the town could talk about either current year results or future, future plans, things like that. There is, there is that option, you could do that if you, if something you guys would like to do.
And then you would just have to audit the numbers that are included in whatever the town provides to make sure.
Yeah, we kind of have to look, look at it for reasons. I mean, these are your financial statements, you know, directly. So we just compile them in accordance with the GATSB standards. But yes, you certainly could provide, provide information if you wanted to about the current year results or looking forward to next year, things along that line. All right. After the financial statements come the footnotes, which basically provide more detailed information about the numbers that are reported in your financial statements themselves. Now, in terms of management, I don't know if you guys wanted me to go into great detail about it. There's, there's two comments this year. Both of them are just general suggestions for improvement or changes, but like, you know, if you read that, a response is provided by management. Both of, both of them have been, I believe, addressed at this point in time. Neither of them were what we call either a significant deficiency or a material weakness that would mean that there was such a large deficiency in the town's internal control structure that we feel would need to get brought to the attention of management. So that's a, that's a good thing. But I can talk about them if you'd like. I don't know if you really have to.
I don't think you, I don't think you have to.
Okay.
Is there anything else that you wanted to come to our attention, or that was...
No, no.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Have a great night.
It's good to know we're not in too rough a shape.
Is the whole baby now?
Maybe. Maybe four. Yeah, now David. Yeah. Now, four, six, eight, ten.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You, too. Oh, yeah. Anybody here for public comment tonight? No? I guess in the middle. Did you have anyone for public comment?
No, I was just saying, I was a sharp job, so...
We've heard one before.
Did you want to say something more?
Yeah, just real quick, as most of you know, we're inspecting the sewer lines on Route 9 for the rest of the length from where we left off. We're about halfway in. I met with the person in charge today, and we have found nothing to this point where it's an emergency case basis. So I wanted to get that out there, that we've still got a ways to go, but things are looking a lot better than they were in the last, the first 2,000 feet. So I just wanted to give a quick update in case anybody was wondering.
I guess, well, at this point while you're talking, we could say that you were elected to the Tri-County Board?
Oh, yes.
And your position. Would you like to explain what, what that's all about?
Well, the Tri-County Board is, it's, it's three counties, directors on a board. I was actually selected for the Hampshire County director. I'll represent Hampshire County. I like when we go to meetings to Boston at the highway level, report back, and then I report back the information to the directors in Hampshire County, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's an honor, rather than everybody, to be appointed, so we're very proud of that also.
It's a good thing.
A little hally getting in there.
On the big stage.
Show them how it's done.
Well, I got a phone call today, they're looking for a representative for the higher level, but I don't think I have the time for that.
We'll keep you busy enough.
There's a lot of retirements, you know, through the system and whatnot, so, you know, I want to get my feet wet in this position before I have to go through 14 meetings a year down in Boston and report back to the whole...
Yep, those connections are, I mean, serious, so they're, they're important. And I know, you know, Mike's done work at the regional level, and, you know, it's, it's the networking that happens as much as the communication, you know, right? So I think, again, we're a small town, so it's nice for us to have the representation data on the small, small-town task force. I mean, those, they've come in handy over the years, so we appreciate it.
You know, I've been a member of the system for, I don't know, probably 12, 13 years, but you gather a lot of information, there's a lot of internetting, you know, interworking when you have your meetings and whatnot, so it's helpful to me in my position, too, when you see how other directors, you know, operate their business and whatnot, so. And we'll tip off to good information ahead of time, too, which would be, which would be good, you know, what's coming down the line. They just had the recent meeting, they had a person come in from, that will be running the new OSHA, and the gentleman spoke to us for a while, so kind of gave a little guidance where we need to go as DPA leaders from this point, so.
Nice.
It's a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's do ambulance update, and then we can do, take also fire substation committee, if you have anything there, and get Mike out of here.
So I was able to get some info for you. So if you see the first, yeah, first line here.
Stanley Grant said there's a... I was ready to cry when he called me to tell me that they're taking off and they're all in the first day, that first day.
Some stuff has been redacted, obviously. But just so you know, this is also the new data system that we just deployed as of July 1st for the fire department, so we have a real, that's pretty cool.
That is cool. That's a great one.
Fire department information as well. So this first one we put together today, it is not, this is a draft, so it's not official. So you can see some of the response times. I can tell you in the first six days, we did 27 responses. Thank you. So here's a graph of Mike, we walked up to the first six days. Real basic. And this last part is, this is the, you have the fire department software, so you'll be able to see our full time and call force responses. It breaks it down by response for EMS and fire. So this is mechanized, so it's clicking a couple of buttons and handling that. So entering the information is the difficult part. All of our folks are being trained on it right now, so when they come back from a call, they enter the information and.
Did you have another one of these for Dave?
Sorry.
My question is, um, the unit versus Hadley Medic One, Hadley Medic Two. So Hadley Medic One obviously is the one housed at Central and then Medic Two would be another one coming in.
Medic Two is the one that's stationed at the, at the bridge. And they have been consistent about staffing that sixteen hours a day. And then Medic Three is not reserved for the town at Hadley, nor is Medic Two. So Medic Two will go out of service to, to Holyoke, but they let us know that. Medic Three is dispatched up if Medic One and Two are out on calls. Anyways, so that's been working quite well. We started June twenty-ninth at nine AM. Everybody was at the station. David came over with us and Molly, you stopped in. So the tension was like, oh my gosh, you know, the buttons are switched, everything's changed over, like, and then nine o'clock came and it was silent. Birds were chirping. However, so we thought we jinxed ourselves being so upset about getting all this together. The dispatching protocols are all in place. They all have been working out very well. Very simple language change, so, so that was good. We worked really hard on that. And then that afternoon on the first day, we, we had a little test. So we had a multiple motor vehicle accident on Route nine, required two ambulances. Lucky enough, Assistant Chief Stromgren and one of his firefighters was driving back from picking up an ambulance, so they stopped on scene and were assisting with it. Then we had an additional call at the street for a car on tree. That turned out to be a refusal, which worked out well. Our protocol now is, Action is very, their, their emergency room doctor requires them to actually have accurate refusal forms. So myself and Deputy Chief Bryant were on scene first. And the, the gentleman there with his child said, I have no desire to go to the hospital. My wife's on her way up. Our protocol, we asked them, would you mind waiting? Could have done a paper form like we've always done. The fly car came up with paramedic in it, did their evaluation and a, you know, a true refusal form was generated. So that's nice. And onwards, and it just like, it snowballed. So you can see the, the number of runs in the first, first six days was pretty intense.
Still a question for you. On the medic ones that stationed out there, are we transporting to Bay State?
If, if it's, if it's called for, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And what was the call going to Franklin Medical? Why, why North instead of?
That was a, that was a request at Hadley, L.A.
Oh.
So, so that was an emergent call that required an ambulance to transport. So not a transfer, it wasn't a transfer or anything like that.
So we've only had one mutual aid call the whole time?
Actually, we've had, we've had more than one mutual aid call. So the mutual aid calls aren't completely reflected in there.
Okay.
So like I said, this is all initial reporting, I can tell you. So those, just to, you know, to let you know, those first, that first six days was, it was really quite impressive. So the fluidity of it that we had been told about, where an ambulance is clearing up at the hospital, their transport times, you can see a four and a half minute response time. I mean, they're, they're going there and they're getting, they're getting the patient quickly to the hospital and coming back. So it's, it's been very nice. We had a rollover accident on North Maple Street, or South Maple Street, I should say. So extrication, working with that team. So our, our firefighter EMT is working with Action immediately, like arriving on scene at the same time. It's, it's quite impressive. And then yesterday, we really truly tested the system and in a matter of an hour, we had five, five calls. So we had two motor vehicle accidents and then three medicals came in all at the same time. So at the same time, Holyoke was going crazy. So their Med Three was unavailable. We went to our run cards. Amherst had a, a fire at the, at the university. So their ambulances were not available because all their staff was dealing with that. So we went to North Hampton for one mutual aid ambulance and one to South Hadley, District One. And all of it was, other than the dispatcher's head spinning because of the number of calls, everybody was transported and was given care. I can tell you that myself and firefighter Virgo were at one of the calls and initiated care until North Hampton arrived. So it's, it's really been quite the team approach and has been, up to now, has been outstanding. The folks that are, have been coming up here are actually, they're liking it so much, they're picking up extra shifts. So we're seeing the same faces. We're really starting to develop the relationship. They're starting to understand how we're working. They're going out with our new folks on driver training to get used to the streets. We've been giving them information on, you know, the, the heavy to-do spots and what to expect. And it, it's been quite nice. We, I did have a meeting with Evan Bryant and Action with the emergency room doctor at Cooley Dickinson. We are under a provisional until all of their paramedics go through their, they have to have four hours of, a four-hour block with the ER doc. So that, all the permits and, and stuff has been, has been gone through. That's all in process. And they're, they've started that process of getting all the paramedics into their, their time with the ER doctor and it's, it's working well.
So on this graph here where it says Elaine, sorry, Hadley, I assume that's just the high frequency call locations. That's why it's highlighted if there's.
That is one of them.
So I did, I do want to add that Chief Mason said that his officers are extremely pleased that when they go to a call, that there's a very limited amount of time when an ambulance has been called and they're right there on the scene. So everybody has, has been working well together and they're very happy too. So I think it's, it's a good Pope Oak safety thing going on right now and we'll just keep on rolling.
Yep. So we have, the only other thing we're waiting for is we are working with Amherst still. We're waiting for the mutual aid agreements and just want to work through that. They, obviously they're coming to the call, the calls when asked, but we just need to finish up that, that process and I'm working with David on that.
Have you guys had any other mutual aid agreements the other way, like us going somewhere else?
Not at this point. So they've put that into my hands for doing it and we wanted to make sure that we're really, that we can kind of get an evaluation of where we're at. North Hampton is very interested in moving our ambulance up on their run card for structure fires so that they can have firefighters heading to the scene and cover their, their community. Action's more than willing to assist with that, more with their Medic Two, not with our Medic One. So we're not, no community wants to dump their town. If it's required, we'll do it. But we want to make sure that we have the ability to, you know, get an ambulance out and, and get it to our community members if needed. We don't want the system to be strained, which it was yesterday.
One of the things we were talking about before was that now that we have a distinctive ambulance in town rather than just Amherst Fire Department, I've had a ton of comments of, wow, I see that thing everywhere. It's busy. It's always, always moving. So I think people didn't quite realize how busy the, you know, Amherst Fire Department was covering Hadley at the time. So I think it's a good thing. And like you said, four, four and a half minute response time is quite a bit better than what we have, so.
We've also been continuing the outreach. So we were at the library yesterday and I was really surprised with the number of little kids that actually said, we got the, the yellow fire truck. We want the ambulance. So that was great. Tomorrow, tomorrow, we're actually going to Winfield Senior Estates to meet with all the, the folks over there. They requested a meeting with the ambulance. So we're, we're going to be over there in the morning with an ambulance because they want to see the ambulance too. And so it's, it's been working well. We're, our quarters, we're working on, we're working on some concepts for some better ideas of housing just because of the location and what's going on in the building. So we've been working on that. And we're working with Action to see if they can maybe assist with the costs on it. And it would be something that would probably be for us in the, in the future as well, as a, you know, as something for when we're expanding with our staff. But like I said, they're, they help out with cleaning the station. We have duty assignments now for both groups. So in the morning, you know, they're cleaning up the kitchen, they're cleaning up the bathrooms and, and cleaning trucks and making sure everything is in order. So it's, it's actually, it's quite exciting. We're still, I mean, you can see how busy we are at the nighttime. So after six, it's still, it's still stressful. You know, we still have a lot of medical calls and a lot of calls for the fire service side of it. And, you know, we're still, we're still lacking there. So that's the discussion we'll, we'll be working on next. And hopefully with the continuation of the ambulance oversight committee, we can start reviewing these numbers and this actual information. And I think that you're going to see that, you know, Action has already offered to have an additional ambulance on the station. And we're working on that plan for, within the next six months to a year, that they would be, you know, we would be assisting with staffing to have that second ambulance in the station or up north and, or something, something along those lines. So we're providing an additional piece of equipment with the staffing that we have on already.
All right. So since you've mentioned up north, how about we'll roll into the fire substation building project. Where, where are we at with that? Where do we want to get started on that?
So the OPM, Phil Colombo was away last week. He has spoken with the architect and they've requested a meeting for next Thursday. So we will be doing our kickoff meeting to get going again with that. And we'll sit down and, and start and pick up where we left off, basically. So there's really no information at this point.
Who's your architect on it? Do you know? Is it somebody that's working in the current?
We don't have, no.
Yes, they, there's, the OPM, we have an architect because we did the initial design for the North Hadley Ball Field.
Yes.
So the, that person that put that design together is, is part of the OPM's project team.
You're right. Stand corrected.
Caleb, yeah. Yes, thank you. Caleb again.
So they don't have to go back out?
No.
That's good.
Basically, they're, the way we're looking at it is the, the design that they have is just relocating it onto a new site. There might be some tweaks, but we're trying to limit any costs for changes on that. So whatever we can do to, to make that work on the new site.
Well, we don't have to bring any of the fill or any of that stuff, you know, that we were going to have to do to the other one. So that's going to cut some costs on the other field, field two, so.
Do we have a plan on how, there were some abutters who had repeatedly expressed an interest in.
Purchasing property.
Yeah, carving off a slice. I mean, do we know how we're going to deal with that?
Yes. So right now, the select board signed a lease, which is going to expire in about six weeks for a farmer to use the property. So when that's done, I've given the OPM the site survey. One of the things that will be revealed in the site survey is that that tobacco barn is a couple of inches across somebody else's property line. So we're going to either have to tear down that barn and/or carve out a certain part of that southern part of the lot in order to correct that deficiency. And this is something that just happened back in the old days. Build a barn here. It looks, it looks good.
But then there's also somebody on the other side.
On the other side expressed an interest. So that would be something that I would bring to the select board, I think, probably in September once we're through that agricultural lease.
I just want to make sure because when it came up, we promised, you know, that at least it would be given audience. So I just want to make sure it didn't get lost.
Well, we want, well, first and most of all is that we want to be sure what we're going to put ours first. And then we'll figure out about where extra property we have. So our project comes first and then we'll deal with everybody else's request after that.
I did receive an anonymous letter from, on that about the properties up there, just making sure that everything's reviewed first before there's any offers out for, for purchase of the property. Or if there was any offers for, you know.
It didn't sound like that letter needed to be anonymous.
Well, it was.
So our, our project comes first and where we're going to place the building and then we'll go from there.
Tobacco barn probably not a big issue, so that.
No, it's at the other end of the field. It's over by Zojinski's. Isn't that Zojinski's property? Who's that property?
McCreskey's, I thought.
Is it?
Paul, Paul behind his house, yeah?
So, you know, Paul is interested in saving that barn. Twenty feet or whatever, thirty feet or whatever. Well, you got fifteen foot easement on the side of the barn. Kind of make it legal if we do, are going to go and square off the property, you know, as long as we got room.
Okay, we'll take a look at it when it comes and we'll move along.
Before Mike leaves us, can I ask a question that's actually related to senior center project? But it involves my, I want to revoke him as an expert testimony.
Oh, boy.
Can you explain fifteen, just, because John just mentioned it, fifteen foot easement, thirty foot easement? What is a requirement of the fire department related to the easement coming from the proposed senior center sighting out to Russell Street? If you're hearing conversation about it having to do with the requirement.
The driveway width, you mean?
Heard the emergency vehicle that access that's going to be cut off.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that, that question was asked of me by multiple folks. And it's actually, it, it's more of a curb cut issue versus where it's not a curb cut. So basically what we're looking at is the width for fire lane access. And the reason why we're requesting that they keep it the full size is it's kind of a tight term there.
And I'm sorry, full size being thirty?
Whatever is proposed on the plan. I think it was thirty or thirty-four feet. Because there was, I think there was something about cutting it down to twenty-four.
You said driveway cuts thirties.
Yeah, I think it's thirty on the plan.
So it's thirty on driveway cut and it's fifteen feet on the back and the sides. And then it's fifty foot step back in the front, whichever the front.
You're talking about the driveway or?
No, no. She's, she asked both questions, the easement on all sides of the building and the driveway.
The easement on the sides of the building I can't answer to. The only, the only setback we have is for the propane tanks. So the propane tanks were some, require distance off of the building and then distance off of the lot line. And if there's any wetlands or anything like that, there's conservation requirements. But as far as the driveway coming in, there was a question as to whether they could reduce the size. I don't think it was from the senior center. It was something else.
So it's the review, the peer review, or in the, in something, in the peer review, the requirement is, I'm going to get the numbers wrong, twenty-five feet and we have thirty feet or something like that. So they basically wanted, yeah, something from you to say, oh, the thirty foot is for the turning radius. It's fine type of thing.
And that's, that's what was done. So they did the turn radius and that's why originally they weren't going to have the raised curbs. But then they came back and said that they wanted it so that you wouldn't have somebody potentially getting hit by a car because there's no, you know, those curbs actually provide protection. But, you know, we wanted to make sure that we kept that turn radius and that's why it's at that thirty whatever feet.
It's thirty feet right now.
Yeah.
Isn't that pretty standard though for emergency E access out of, even say like Grand Oak over there? They put in that street for emergency access, so you'd have two on one area?
Yeah, I mean, obviously it's always, it's, yeah. I mean, there's been discussions about making it a true fire lane, you know, putting some sort of a, putting ballads with a chain up or something. So those are still, you know, issues that are being discussed. So it's not being used as a driveway in and out all the time, but if there's an event, we could take the chain down and.
They usually have like a breakaway chain that you can just roll through.
Don't scratch our fire truck.
Plastic chain.
Breakaway as we just cut it.
What Mike just said, does that make sense relative to the conversation you had today with the OPM?
Well, I think he has a different idea. So the, I understand is that the thirty feet applies with the intersection of that driveway, the easement and Route nine. And we're talking about a curb cut here.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's maybe where we're not talking about the same thing. I was told about the access between the Legion and the Hadley Senior Center.
Is this about increasing the easement width?
Yes.
That's what I heard.
That's the question.
Yeah, so that's, I think that's because we have the existing thirty foot right of way, which that could be, you know, that's a broad definition. And then we need another thirty feet to match up to that existing curb cut that would get you into the senior center parking lot. So it's, what we need is sixty feet of total easement.
We're not landing airplanes, so.
No, but it's, I don't know.
That's not required in any.
Well, 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 this is because of the way the property is laid out. I don't, you know, I'm just saying that's what they have on the plans right now.
That's not right.
Because they're going to do parking over the right of way and then a fire lane next to that.
We want to make sure we maximize the Legion parking.
Yeah.
So, okay.
When the discussion first came up, though. When the discussion first came up, though, parking spaces that are on that Westerly border right now?
Yeah, yeah.
We wanted to leave them and just keep the access of, is there now that goes up to the rear? So.
The existing entrance, pretty much.
That's, I think that's it, is there is that existing path there, but it's not necessarily, we don't have any kind of agreement for that existing path right now.
Could you theoretically do a swap?
We'd still need that thirty foot right-of-way that we have currently for all the utilities. Unless we put them under the road or something.
But that was one of the initial discussions and agreements, I believe, was keeping the parking there and then moving the access.
Oh, yeah, we wanna keep the parking there for the Legion.
Yeah, utilities are going underground anyway, you're gonna pave over them anyway.
Yeah, and that's where the parking would be.
Right, so that's okay.
Yeah, but then we need another thirty feet for that, that emergency access, that's the problem.
That, that wasn't, see, that wasn't asked of me. So if, I think that's maybe where the discrepancy is.
Yeah, but that's why I wanted any barriers in there.
I can show you this too, what they're proposing, maybe it would be better if you see that image, but that's, uh.
Yeah, that's the one I saw.
But there's no barriers there.
There's no barriers in there, yeah.
So there's still an access. Nine times out of ten, there's not gonna be any parking in the back over there, that's always gonna be up closer to the building itself. Um, that's for other functions that they might have there.
I mean, is the concern that the, the Legion might put up a structure there and not allow the?
I think that it was just trying to make sure we ensure that being a, a fire lane or emergency access route, cause it's in the plans right now. So I think it's more about.
You're still going through their driveway.
Yeah, it's about going through their driveway and do, do we wanna maintain that as some kind of legal or have like an easement there?
From them?
We can't just put a road in there and say we can do it, so.
No, I mean, it makes more sense to me now why the topic came up. I was just having trouble mapping back to what you were saying previously, which I, I thought we were all set. And then I thought it was like, oh, no, we now need more. So this is a crossing the Ts and dotting the Is discussion point, but certainly something that, again, we're, you know, trying to be cooperative with our neighbors, you know, so, okay.
There is NFA standard, so I can follow up if you'd like on that, so. Cause I, I thought you were talking about the internal area, cause there was the question of the curb cut. And they said, it's not a curb cut, it's, because it's the driveway access between the senior center and the Legion parking lots. So that's what I was, thought you were talking about.
Okay, yeah, there's so many areas.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, yeah.
I thought for a second you meant in the front where the ballons are.
Okay, anything else on the library or the senior center?
Uh, I don't have any updates, um, you know, other than the planning board meeting is next Tuesday, so.
Okay, so we'll have something next Wednesday?
Yep, library committee, um, we met on Monday, um, but, but again, we're just rolling through our process.
What's that?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I guess one update is we did vote on the senior center to go with a shingle roof, um, on the senior center. Unless there's any changes at the next town meeting that allows a metal roof to be on a building in the historic overlay district, such as the senior center.
So they're gonna bring out another thing for the, for the fall town meeting?
Yeah, and it would be an op, right now it's gonna be an option on the construction documents to have a metal roof. We're gonna be moving forward with, for presentation to the planning board next week, a shingle roof.
Yeah, because the planning board said when we had that, um, uh, discussion with them, that it was the, the way the bylaws currently worded is what is causing them to say no to the.
Metal roof.
Standing scene, whatever you call it, metal roof. And that, and this question was posed, well, if, I mean, because back then, the bylaw didn't necessarily contemplate the fact that all of the existing buildings would then have a metal roof on them. So now if we brought it back to, to keep actually the character of the whole thing and make it conducive to solar, maybe town meeting would wanna go for allowing it on new construction as well. And that would impact the library, so that was a conversation with Jimmy Maximowski and said, yeah, that's what would have to happen, right?
Yeah, and I've prepared an article for that.
Okay, uh, let's go back up to, uh, water abatement process, um.
Well, I'm sorry, just before, can I just ask?
Sorry, interrupt.
Just before we leave the building projects, but as Christian said, we do have that planning board meeting next Tuesday. So does it, where, where do we stand right now relative to their issues being addressed? What's the latest?
Latest I heard was that Tom Reedy was working with the OPM and the architects in order to come up with the solutions to the three issues raised by the planning board. I haven't heard anything specific, I know that they've been working with the conservation commission about using some of the green space for parking. They've been looking at the, at, uh, alternative to parking designs, um, but I haven't seen anything specific at this point. The OPM did say that he was gonna have Tom Reedy get in touch with me this afternoon, I haven't heard anything.
And I know they were digging test pits over at the senior center today, um, which was part of the overall branch design.
I thought we had done borings on that property.
We did the boring, but they wanted the.
Borings, test pits, and I don't know how that influences the whole design, but they were digging it today, I know that was a, um, hurdle.
Yeah, five, five pits, twelve feet deep, and, and I was instructed, well, told that, um, they found nothing but sand, so. That's a good, that's a good thing.
Yep, it's a good thing.
The center of town, little fairytale, um, okay.
So at some point, depending on what happens next Tuesday, um, I mean, if it gets approved, that's good. But, um, one thing we did talk about at the, the library building committee is, again, just, um, I think the, you know, select board certainly needs to be aware of the costs that are increasing here. So, um, you know, they're estimating it about, I think Mark Sullivan said it's like a thousand dollars a, a week, I think, at this point, so.
Well, what can we do to move it forward?
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, we need to get through next Tuesday.
It's not our fault, the planning board is, uh, is in charge of it right now, so.
Well, I'm just saying, so once, next Tuesday's big, but if, if for whatever reason, next Tuesday, um, there's not agreement, then I think, given the fact that the select board's really charged with the ma, overall management of all of these projects. I think we need to start, um, becoming more aware of the costs of these things and, and, and have that discussion brought to the select board for a holistic discussion of the library and the senior center. And what we can do in, in terms of, um, looking at ways to potentially mitigate costs. If everything goes according to the law.
If it doesn't go through next week, we'll have more money we'll have to spend on Mr. Reedy. And that ten thousand dollars will go up to more than ten thousand dollars, and where is that money gonna come from?
It's like I said, hopefully everything goes according to the law, but if it doesn't, I think we really need to start talking about that, cause we're talking some significant knowledge here.
Okay, water abatement process, Marlo.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring, uh, to the board's attention how, how we handle water abatements now, um, and what I'm proposing to, to change. Uh, as it exists now, we handle the sewer abatements at the DPW. I just recently was informed that the, the water abatements were being, um, handled, um, in the town hall. So I took a look at the process, um, basically the process is, you know, the application will come to the select board's office. Five copies will be scanned, one sent to me, uh, to, to the administrative assistants, to collector's office, and then, uh, one to Janice Kanga's. And then the process is we'll request from the collector's office the history and copy of the bill, um, request from DPW a recommendation, which Mike, Mike, Sharon and I would give a recommendation. But as of late, we, we just discussed it in the office and I gave the recommendation to, to the select board's office. So once the vote was taken at the select board's meeting after the recommendations were given, um, Janice downstairs would notify the, the resident of the results of the abatement. So I'm proposing just to streamline this, cut it back to two copies, um, basically the collector's office, my office, um, deals directly with the select board's office. And then the DPW would make the phone call after the vote's taken. It's part of the streamlining process, um, putting both water and sewer abatements in the DPW. And that sums it up in a nutshell.
How often does it happen?
Uh, what do we get, two or three, four, uh, per cycle? You know, sometimes it, it's all done in the collector's office if it was an error read or something, went wrong with the gun or something. Overall, I don't think we have many as, as a general rule.
Yeah, built four times a year, so there's usually one or two.
Yeah.
To, to abate based, uh, a computer error or some sort of reading error. And then there's, every now and then, there's a significant issue with somebody with a leak who claims that the, the leak was not actually their fault or their responsibility.
We also wanna keep customer service close to the source.
Yeah, well, that's the other part of it, too, keep it under one umbrella. I mean, ultimately, when it comes to the board for a vote, for discussion, it's the same thing, it just, it's streamlining how it makes it to you folks, really.
Well, actually, it really doesn't need to come to us unless we have to have a guarantee somebody is, uh, uh, coming before us with an objection of how, you know, it not being fair or whatever. And while it's stating their case, but if it's cut and dried, it really doesn't need to even come before us, I don't think.
Actually, I think it does.
Does it?
Except the sets of laws require it, so.
Well, and why aren't the wastewater ones coming to us, though? Because we're, we're really, uh, sewer questioners also. They do come.
John, John, I think we're talking about process to get the process to you.
They do come to us.
Yeah, they do come to you.
I have seen them.
Yeah, yeah.
But they don't, they don't come in the same form as the, the water ones.
If there's an abatement, they do.
Yeah, it's on the same form. But water and sewer recommendation would come from the DPW as opposed to, I, I should say, the paperwork being handled and the process to get to you folks on the board is handled all in one spot now, rather than water handled in the town hall and sewer handled in our office down there. Just put them two together, we're, you know, overall, we're not talking about a lot of time. It's a matter of saving some paper and taking some steps out of it and streamlining it directly to the board is, is what it boils down to.
Well, I don't know if it's something we need to vote on as, as a board, but I'd like to make a motion to change it to the recommended new process and, um, it's, like you said, it eliminates paperwork, it takes a couple people out of the mix there. And, uh, it starts bringing everything into a DPW, as a DPW should be both water and sewer.
Second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both stand.
Okay, and then seasonal and temporary workers for the DPW? David, you wanted this on too, there's, uh, Marlo?
Yeah, um, I'll let Marlo, Marlo speak about it, but basically it's a way to, um, get some economical, very help. Uh, without all the associated benefits and long-term cost to town, I don't know if I could keep going.
Yes, I, I have a lot of experience with what I call a summer help program, uh, from, from when I came from Greenfield. It can handle a lot of the, the small labor that, that we, that we do on a daily basis. And the, uh, you know, qualified people can be doing, you know, other things like setting drainage or repairing drainage, so on and so forth.
You're talking like, um, painting fire hydrants, mowing?
Yeah, mowing, um, you know, breaking some of the highway department free from the standard mowing, uh, day to day. So the other part of it is, um, in our field, um, it's dwindling, as, as John knows, water and sewer licenses, um, the program is three or four fold. Um, and my experiences over the years, um, we, we've actually had, uh, summer hires or temp, summer hires, uh, come to the DPW full-time and be successful in water and sewer or highway or whatever. Some have actually gone through college, come back all four seasons, come back ten years later, I don't recognize them and say, I became an engineer in a DPW out, out of these somewhere. I think it's, it's more of, you know, a community thing here also. We can talk about the process, you know, further, but, you know, the way we handled it in Greenfield was generally, um, the Greenfield, um, college student got first right of refusal, or they had to be eighteen years old. They'd come back year after year. If you didn't get any applicants within the town, then you go, you know, outside the town. I mean, we have a pretty, pretty hefty program in Greenfield, we hire twelve, thirteen a year, but that's not what I'm looking to do here. So I just wanted to lay it out that, you know, it'd be good for the community to get a community college kid involved, make some money, come back to school in the fall, um, get some of the general labor done, um, gain experience. In my experiences, some of the summer help, their second or third year, they were jumping right in with highway and water and sewer and doing, doing, you know, some skilled stuff. So I do have temp wages line item in, in, in all my budgets, um, I mean, it's not bound to fold for, for three or four people, but it was a program I had brought up, uh, back when I did my organizational change about a year and a half ago, it was part of my work chart. We just haven't gotten back to it to, to establish it, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention, it's something I would like to try, uh, next year, possibly one, maybe two, depending on budgeting. So I drafted up a, a job description and, and what a, you know, a posting would look like. And I would welcome any comments from the board or.
I say the more the merrier, as long as you can manage them, it was one, two, three, four, whatever you can handle, I mean, why not?
Do it now, I got two months. But you need them right now.
Well, by the time we get it posted and figured out where they're gonna go and what we're doing, I think we're, they're gonna be getting ready to go back to college. I, I find that a lot of them usually knock off like the second, third week of August, bring them in July one or, or in June when they, um, if, if they're in college, you know, between years. But I think by the time we really got it rolling, got it posted out there and, and got interviews done and, and got them hired in, I'm normally looking at it a, a couple of weeks before.
What about seniors in the, in the high school that might be going on to agricultural or something of that nature?
Or even military, military.
Right, and that's something, you know.
Be interested to in setting up something with the superintendent to have that put out there to see if the kids would be interested in something like that.
Yeah, you know, and it's like, I drafted it to be eighteen years of age and have a driver's license, that's really the only requirements. It's pretty amazing, once you, you, you get some of them trained, how independent they can work. Take the truck and go off with a zero thermal mower and, and mow the pound of facilities for the day and then go.
You have kids over at Smith School that are from Hadley that might be interested in, uh, working for the town there in small engines or things like that, which would be repairs and things like that, too, so. Certainly would be worthwhile exploring that this coming year for next year, too.
The wastewater treatment plant and use a coat of paint on the walls on the outside, you know, all kinds, there's all kinds of work for them that, that we struggle to catch up to this time of year, we're busy with everything else, so.
The only recommendation I would probably make was if the board could give Marlo the authorization to begin doing this now, and if he uses it, good, if not, then, you know, he can start doing it next year. But, um, you know, if we're, if we're hiring people at eleven dollars an hour with more benefits versus thirty, forty, fifty dollars an hour with these highly licensed certified people that are making a lot more money, I mean, it's a good way to save some cash.
All they want, I'll make a motion to authorize Marlo to, uh, implement this program at his discretion.
Second, further discussion?
The only thing I was gonna say is to have like a term, you know, and a date or start date, maybe, but other than that, I have no other idea.
Yeah, it's usually third week of June, first week of July, depending on what's left in the budget at the end of June.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we start looking in March or April generally, taking the absurd, or into May as, as, you know, the college kids are getting.
Yeah, I could just see somebody applying and be like, I'll just stay here and keep working or whatever you wanna do, so just having a term, so they can have expectations, how much you're asking to work for.
Temporary, they want a temporary.
And if you can get them to come back to three or four years of college, it, it's, believe it or not, it's a pretty good incentive to have, you know, that, that quarter rate, it's eleven, eleven, twenty-five or eleven fifty.
It's like the lifeguards at the beach, they're the same ones over and over, two, four years while they're in college, you know?
I, I've had some very good experiences with this, it's, it's pretty, uh, it's, it's pretty cool when they, when they come to you eight, ten years later and say, hey, I'll never forget, you know, the first time I messed up on that mower, you talk to me, and I'm an engineer now, I'm doing this or whatever, so it's, it's, uh, it's a pretty good feeling in my head, too.
One question, so you were just referring to the term, term of employment.
Term of employment, yeah, making that clear.
Because I would be against, um, limiting you on the term or the time of year you can hire them, because if you have someone that has graduated from Hopkins and maybe you have something that needs to be done during the winter months, I'd wanna allow you to hire those people during.
So I was just gonna say, if they work June and July and, and, and they can work part-time throughout the winter, and again, they got a license, they can drive a pickup, they got another floor guy, right?
You just wanna make sure that they, that was the temporary worker.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm concerned about.
And we gotta be careful, you know, there's no overtime, they can't work more than seven, I mean, the, the label hasn't changed a little bit, so we have to be very mindful of that, too.
So Marlo, for what you said, definitely a, a term limits on the temporary employment, but I, I wanna give you the authorization. but I want to give you the authorization to hire temporary help all year round, basically, if needed.
When kids are on vacation or, you know, we use them in the spring or the winter when they're on vacation.
Yeah. My only fear is, my only fear is you could take this and hire people at $11 an hour and make them year-round positions that are part-time.
No.
And just don't want to abuse it, so you have to have like that.
You do, and you...
That's why I say, make it clear.
And I wanted to raise for the board first with some sort of plan, you know, these drafts can change a little bit as I work through it, but I think the important piece was to see how the board felt about it, you know, and obviously I will, you know, sit down with the union and talk to them and, you know, make sure that we're all on board of, you know, the skilled labor isn't going to be done, I mean, that's at the end of the day, so.
So, can I modify the motion, please? Sorry, I think I made the motion original.
What are you going to modify?
I would like to approve the request, but make it effective immediately and also strike
summer from the job description and allow this to happen all year round. And we can also set a temporary time limit.
Okay. So, second on that.
So, change one of the draft of the job description.
Kick out this one.
Right at the top.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oops, Dan.
Okay, yeah, great idea.
All right.
Thank you.
For the housing and housing.
This is an issue that was raised by the planning board, brought to the select board. The select board said that they would take it under advisement, so this is the next available meeting to discuss this. It was suggested by the planning board that this could be done by a consultant and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission does have people specializing in this issue. Board is to pleasure a report.
I just have one comment real quick, as I did, I had an event, I went to an event, let's say, for the Kestrel Trust and I met somebody from Valley Community Development, I don't know if you guys are familiar with them at all. They said that they might have some interest in talking to us, I don't know what that would entail, but I don't know if that's something we could do in parallel to...
Is that Joanne Campbell?
Yeah, I talked to Donna Cadena, but she recommended Joanne Campbell to talk to her.
Yeah.
So, I, just a little bit, so I'm on the board of the Valley CDC.
Okay, there we go.
And I had brought in Joanne and Donna to the planning board, they went over and worked with them a little bit. They could come and talk to you and explain the whole process of how it works, they do it quite often where for a fee, of course, they do the monitoring of it, the vetting of the, going through the low income, make sure someone is qualified. They are, they deal with East Hampton, Northampton, Amherst, and Hadley is in their area.
So, who actually does the vetting on all of that now, so for the existing stock we have, do you know who did the income?
Housing Authority.
I don't think so, because they don't want to do any additional...
It's a state agency and the name escapes me, under the DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, they do a census of our affordable housing and give us a report every year.
So, would this be redundant or would this be a value-added?
I think this would be value-added because DHCD just does the inventory, they don't...
Does it cost anything to do this, or is this just...
She said there would be a fee.
How much are we paying Pioneer Valley? We just got the bill and I think it was 800 and some odd dollars, but if we did it with Pioneer Valley, I would explore doing it through a DLTA grant. Well, that's what I mean, they're set up with the grants and it seems pretty reasonable, some of the fees that they are charging us and they're charging the planning board.
Well, I don't mind talking to both of them, you know. I agree with you, I mean, I don't want to, yeah.
You know, if there's ground one available.
CDC does.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if Valley CDC seemed like more about development, where also we need some maybe negotiation with existing facilities as well, so.
I don't know if they would do that, because they really focus on the development, but so, yeah, I mean, they talked about that with the planning board a little bit.
So, maybe we could have them come in and maybe the planning board would want to be present as well here.
So, this, their development they focus on, is that building lower-income housing developments in communities, is that what they want?
Yeah, so like there's, in Northampton right now, there's the lumberyard and there's, I don't even, I can't even remember how many units are going in there, but they're all going to be the lower-income housing, so the applications will have to come in and they'll have to, now, those are apartments and it depends, like they were involved with East Street with the condos, that's a little different because that's ownership.
Right.
And that's where you get a 6%, they take like a 6% fee to do that, but the apartments are a little different because they got to keep up on it and they got to keep that, monitoring it, because once...
It's an ongoing service.
It's an ongoing, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I might find you out more about what they have to offer and then compare that to planning commission.
Because I think we have to kind of look at a multi-pronged approach, you know, do we need new development, do we need to renegotiate with...
I don't think we should personally be looking at bringing in more, you know...
We're way over our numbers as long as we can keep what we have.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we need to be doing negotiations with Mountain View Apartments, is what our goal is right now, to get in some of these others to keep the percentage in Windfields, the number of low-income apartments that are there, that's how you get your number and your percentage, and that's what we need to do with people to build those without adding any extra buildings.
Well, I think the message I heard from the planning board is they just want to make sure it was clear to us that it is our responsibility, not theirs, to manage this and that we've kind of resting on our laurels almost to a point because we had so much inventory, but the rules change and all of that, so we need to have a program in place, so I think that, so in my mind, the question is, who do we work with, is it the Valley CDC or is it...
Sorry, just keeping us awake.
Yeah, or the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Yeah, we don't know, we don't know, there may be services.
Whoever's most effective and maybe a consortium would be the one that would work. All right, so I'll work with Amy and we'll start putting something together for a little bit later on in the summer in terms of appointments and talking about options.
All right, David, do you have anything for your report, short and sweet?
Short and sweet. I was up in Lake Winnipesaukee for a week.
That's good, short and sweet, thank you. We'll move on, since you haven't been here.
Well, actually, there's a lot that's going on, but let me just give you the major updates. We've talked a lot about this already. Town hall fire alarm system and DPW fire alarm systems are expected to be installed at the first week of August. We'll have to do some coordination and make sure that we're not interrupting our operations. Worked with the department heads today about the special time meeting coming up, making sure that people know that the deadlines are important and that we are working to prepare a draft warrant for you all. And capital plan, we had a meeting of the capital planning committee, we didn't manage to make quorum, but we had a very good discussion of DPW and the capital needs. Chris, I don't know if you have anything to amplify there?
Yeah, no, Marla made a really good presentation that he put together that we just talked about in the meeting and trying to think if there's anything, I think it's good to see the 10-year, see some of the needs that are repeat needs year after year and then have some long-range planning options in there as well, so I think it's good.
All right, upcoming of town actions and community events, the Hadley Farm Museum has got a new sign-up, they're open on weekends, I recommend people go. CPA funding request due July 30th, special time meeting articles due July, August 1st, and then we have a Pocahontas coming up on August 5th. If any questions arise, I didn't go over much of the details here, but...
We know where to find you.
You know where to find me and there's a lot happening.
One quick thing, got an update on the, there's been a lot of questions on the Crosswalk, a lot of phone calls have been coming in. Latest news I got this morning was they're just waiting, everything is done, they're waiting for EverSource to hook up and then start testing this thing and...
Good luck.
Yeah, so Tim was saying, the meeting this morning, EverSource is a real problem right now.
Yeah. So, that's where we're at, that's why it's been sitting there for three or four weeks since the electrical's been done. The inspection's been done by the town, so just wait on EverSource.
I got one question.
Sure.
Did we get our money yet from the insurance, from the...
I reached out to commercial insurance, I said, "Here's the claim number, what's the deal, give me a call," I have not heard anything back.
Can we just send a bill from the town to the people that did the damage, since their insurance company has been taking care of it, and go that route in the meantime?
All right, that's what we'll do.
Because it's been pretty, just a man letter or something along those lines, because it's getting silly at this point.
Okay.
A large, dark font.
Yeah.
Okay, we just wanted to, in open session, say that we now have a contract with our chief of police for the next three years. We settled that with them at our last meeting, so if that's for signing...
Yes, that's right.
Do we need to have a motion in open setting?
Make a motion to approve the contract as negotiated with Chief Police Michael Mason, I forgot who he was for a moment.
And further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and then we were going to just touch lightly on what our, I can't see it there, goals and objectives for the select board. At a future meeting, we should discuss and bring forward with us our goals and objectives and we have all these people to do, we have...
No, this is just that inventory from the project.
Yeah.
So, but I think what you're talking about is the goal-setting for the department heads that are...
Yes, do.
Do.
All right, so you've got five department heads that you'd normally ask for, do some sort of evaluation, so it's the ones for the town administrator, building inspector, chief of police, chief of fire, DPW director, I don't think I'm missing anybody else. Usually start with a request that we do, a self-evaluation based upon what we identified as goals and objectives from the prior year and then using that information, then you can go ahead and put together your evaluation and set goals and objectives for the coming year.
So, so I was thinking about this today, I mean, they're going to be the grassroots goals and objectives, so the department heads come to us and say, you know, we really need to, but then there are other goals that are more organization-wide that seems like we should work on at least some of them. So, just, you know, I keep having this dream of us actually having a strategic plan or something, but try to nip off pieces of it, you know, so, I mean, developing an interim solution to address human resource, IT, and finance needs, you know, I think we have a sense of what the longer-term solution is that involves far more significant funding and staffing, but we still need to get from here to there. Long-range plan for the town buildings, including swing space for the library and senior center construction projects, identifying efficiencies and cost savings opportunities at the administrative function level, which is what the stuff that's here is, and we already agreed that we're, you know, we're going to form a subcommittee, we're going to try to get that going in August. Long-range plan for the planning function itself, I mean, planning board members keep coming in saying, "Look at us, you know, we're going to have to leave."
We'll fight that.
And then a comprehensive review of salaries and benefits for all town employees, I mean, we keep pushing that off and pushing that off, so, I mean, those are things that probably aren't going to come necessarily from the department heads when they come in with their goals and I'm wondering if we could have the opportunity for everybody here to come up with their own list and then, again, pick a few off, because that's going to help inform what we may be asking people who are involved in supporting these things to do.
Yeah, I was going to just bring up at this point, or some point, I was just going to ask if it's possible to have either one more meeting a month or some kind of like retreat session where we could kind of focus on some of these higher-level issues that are separate from a lot of the more monthly things that we're addressing in a lot of our meetings. It seems like we don't have time to dig into some of these things to really talk about them. Is there another meeting we can do it where we don't just focus on one thing or, you know, do a retreat type of thing to talk about it?
Yeah, we've talked about doing a retreat before.
I was talking with the school superintendent and found out the school committee is doing something for their next meeting on July 30th where I think it's a 3:30 meeting where they're doing a normal meeting and then I think it's from 3:30 to 9:30 or something like that, they block off a number of hours to try to have a strategic planning session and do some things. I thought that was a great idea to do something along those lines, it's an open meeting, but it's also an opportunity to have a broader discussion. I don't know if we can do anything like that.
Definitely in favor of doing it.
That's a kind of chunk of time we're looking at, because...
And when we all have time.
But that's the thing, it's going to probably depend on...
I work every day till 5, so...
Yeah, I mean, my schedule's flexible, but things come up and all that, but...
I think we, you know, 5:30 to 9 o'clock or 9:30, I think six hours in a chunk of time of doing this kind of stuff is tedious.
You could do it Saturday morning or something.
Do it Saturday morning, when summer's open, we could take one in the fall.
Or have, or, what I was thinking...
Do a fall day, one, have lunch and, you know, do that type of thing.
Or just having another meeting a month where it's focused on a particular issue and trying to minimize the amount of...
I would prefer a Saturday where we could just get at it at 9 o'clock in the morning and...
Yeah, be done by noon or something.
Be done by noon or 3 o'clock in the afternoon instead of taking, you know, another evening.
Can you do that, David, with your schedule?
As long as it's far enough in advance.
You can schedule a Saturday?
Why don't we look at a Saturday, you know, coming in in the fall and see what we can do?
But for something like this, how, what kind of deadline do you see?
Well, that's the problem we always get into, because we get jammed up, you know, everything's, you know, seems to revolve around the town meetings, so you can't do anything until annual town meeting happens and then town meeting happens, then, oh my gosh, we just went to a meeting, we got to take a break, and we get, oh, now it's summer, and then so we reduce the number of meetings, but that's, normally, you want to have your goals set for the coming year, at least at the beginning of the year, and we're already a month into the new fiscal year and we haven't even talked about this stuff yet, so it's like we're always off kilter and it never seemed to have a good...
Well, because now we're also getting into the fall town meeting, we're picking up things that were left off from the spring annual town meeting and picking up, leaving off and getting things finished up because we haven't gotten the budget yet from the state, so we don't know what our chair sheets are going to be, we won't put those numbers till God only knows when, because they haven't even finalized their budget in Boston yet, they're one of the, one of the fewest states right now that have not set a budget. So, when does that mean, the rest of the towns and cities in Massachusetts will have an idea of where they stand, you know, so your hands are tied for some of these things, you know.
I mean, I think a lot of this stuff, at least, and again, this is just what's in my mind, doesn't, I don't see it necessarily having a huge impact on the fire chief, the police chief, the building inspector, DPW director. David, on the other hand, you know, so maybe it's a matter of keeping his a little bit looser until we get through this process and then you're supporting, I don't know, what do you think?
That'll work.
But we still want to do the performance reviews for the prior year for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, the part of the processes that I come to sometime in October anyways, and I say, okay, we're going to start working on the next fiscal year and there's got to be some sort of marching orders that go to the department heads. And that's all based upon, what are your goals and objectives, what is your vision for the town?
Like this year, using that HR, IT and finance, everybody said, yep, those are huge priorities. But then we ran out of time because we bumped it up too close to, so I think that's why we had to do it before that October, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
Could we just devote a meeting that's already scheduled to doing some of these tasks and just not do any, you know, not take any critical new business or not do a, you know, ambulance update or whatever, that meeting and then just catch up on all that stuff the next time around, unless there's something urgent that needs to be taken care of?
I think, I think today we did an ambulance update because of it just.
Oh, yeah. It was. I'm just saying for the future, let's just focus on knocking this out.
I don't see us having an ambulance update every time we have a meeting.
We'll have a quarterly report possibly from the oversight committee.
What about your agenda for August 22nd? The only thing that's on there is Mr. Rotuno will give you a five-minute presentation on his internship. There's no other issues that are on your agenda at this point.
Let's do some of that down.
Are we finished about the whole meeting and be done with it? Where, you think we can cover, what needs to be covered in that meeting and do we?
Well, I think, I think mainly if we're setting goals, there'll probably be a whole bunch of, okay, well, you guys go do that. I mean, to-do's coming out of it to finalize it, but yeah, I mean, if we could at least get the framework in place.
How about the evaluations, can we do that at this same time as far as, as far as that, it could take a longer, it takes a little bit longer.
Yeah, we don't like to give people too much shirt shift. You did a fine job next. You, not so much next.
We'll talk again.
Well, that'd be a, just curiosity, I think last year we did the self-evaluation. And then we came back for kind of the goals and objectives. It was kind of like two separate meetings.
Yeah.
Just curiosity, what would be the thoughts of combining them and the department head completed in one meeting? Because some of the goals and objectives carry over the following year if we presented them that way. Just, just a thought, I'm just trying to think the mic was.
If you're ready to do a self-evaluation and present your goals, then that's, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, we'll go with that.
It'll be good.
And we always reserve the right to swap something out because something else comes and say, well, you know, now that we've done this, we think.
Well, let's pick some to come on the 22nd and do the, that gives them a month's time to do their evaluation and set their goals. And we'll do that in August. Okay?
So just to be clear, August 22nd, I wrote down goals and objectives for the select board. We're going to be adding goals and objectives for the department heads.
That's going to take up the whole meeting right there. No, I mean.
Oh, just that.
Just the department heads, could be.
So which is more critical, the evaluations there, the goals and objectives, which comes first?
Well, the self-evaluation should be with the goals and objectives. So I wouldn't anticipate that they, like Marlo said, they spill over to one another, so.
But I think what David's asking is, do, do we want to commit the time as a board determining what we think the overall goal should be for the town for the year? Or devote the time? And so again, it's kind of a problem because, in my own opinion, is always you take care of the people stuff first because it's not fair to, you know, especially if you have constructive criticism and then somebody's three or four months into the next cycle.
Right. I think some of our goals and objectives are what our department heads bring to us. And what we feel will be our priorities and our goals for the coming year and what, how we would prioritize what they bring.
So the Department of Revenue, you recommended that the select board develop a five-year strategic plan. Okay, that's a lot of work, a lot of unified vision, visioning. We've been making incremental steps towards getting that. There are a lot of pieces that are falling into place to help make that happen. You did the SWOT analysis, for example, at the beginning, an attempt to look at, okay, so what are, what is the shape of the future for you in terms of good things, the bad things, things that are challenging, things that are going to be easy? We've done a number of others, such as the financial management report by the Department of Revenue. I mean, I think, and the master plan and pretty soon the updated open space plan. I think these things are helpful to put together a strategic vision. I think one meeting of the select board is probably insufficient to come up with that five-year future look forward. But you can, you can use that meeting as a way to begin to put together immediate goals, intermediate goals and long-term goals for the town.
To me, yeah, that takes more than one meeting. It's going to be, I mean, either adding an extra meeting up on floor, having some sessions to kind of focus on these things. Without that, I just don't see us being able to get it done.
What if we did on August 22nd, what if we did the, the employees, DC the department heads, and then plan on another meeting, it's an extra meeting for just the select board, whether that's a Saturday morning.
Okay.
Or another Wednesday night, whatever.
So let's start with August 22nd.
We'll start there.
And then department heads.
Okay. Do we want to address this issue again next week to try to schedule a further meeting or how do we?
No, maybe Joyce could, can you and David, like throw out some dates?
That's what I'm working on right.
Okay.
Right now. Alright, so we have September 5th, September 19th, September 26th. I think the farther you put that off, the closer you get to your top meeting and things get jammed up. So I'd say September 5th is your best opportunity.
But that's a meeting we already have scheduled, right?
We're talking about adding one. So what about August 29th, is everybody around or is that?
No. That's before.
The 12th.
September 12th.
Oh, are you talking a Saturday or another Wednesday?
I'm talking about another Wednesday, I don't, I'm not around on Saturdays till the end of September.
Yeah, 12th.
I don't fell off the ladder today, God knows what I'm going to do today.
You answer, you answer.
Yeah, look at the cam, on the ladder.
Did you come home?
Get my calendar, I got it.
I'll see you at higher.
My husband made me switch, I loved my iPhone. Put you in touch with Mr. Android. Let's walk there.
Well, even. The 12th.
September 5th?
September 12th.
September 12th?
With headquarters?
No. Another race in August, I'm not sure.
But this is September.
Oh, September.
September 12th.
Oh, okay.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so that looks good.
No, August 22nd morning might not be able to make.
Alright, let's, any news or announcements?
I think we have Mr. Boysberg.
Yes. Yes, John Boysberg Jr. has reached the end of his probationary period. He works in the highway department. Came aboard early January, he had most of his licenses when he came, came on board with us. During his probation, he went out and he got his 4G license for the, for the large mower, roadside mower. He's fit into the crew wonderfully. Certainly, he likes to get his tasks done. Very timely, very quiet at times, I wonder if he's there, he's always getting something done, always tinkering. So he's been a great addition to the department. And I would recommend to promote full status probation.
Need a motion for that? Make a motion that we accept the recommendation of DPW director relative to Mr. Boysberg.
Okay.
And further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, both standing.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Boysberg, on probation. I did have one, I had condolences to the family of Nellie Zakowski Griffin. She was the holder of our golden cane. She turned 100.
This is 2013, she turned 100, so.
Oh, wow, 105.
Yeah, somewhere in that range.
God bless her. So anyway, to her family, we offer our condolences. Can we entertain a motion to go into executive session?
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we go into executive session per the provisions of National law, chapter 30a, section 2183 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting might have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair does declare. We have a couple of, or three items tonight, actually, not four, three items tonight. First one related to land court case number 000190 in DV. Contract negotiations with the DPW director and strategy for litigation relative to Mountain View Apartments and a water issue. And not to, not to reconvene in open session.
And the chair so declares that going into executive session is, well, I don't get any of these things. For the, it would be a detriment to the, to be an open session?
Yeah, the discussion in open session would be detrimental to the interest of the town.
That's it, thank you. Somebody better print that out for him. Thank you, so roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Whiskers.
Mr. Phil.
Yes.
And it's Kega.
Yes.
And it's Stanley.
Yes.
And it's Chuck Hough.
Yes.
Congratulations, your second session.
Thank you.
I hope it's been too long.
I'm not planning on. Thank you.
Give me a call.